Welcome to this meeting of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. We will begin with introductions from the committee, starting from my left, going to my right, ending with our House Chairman and myself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Christine Burstein. I live in Lincolnville, Maine. I represent District Number 96 in seven towns in Walgo County.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Bashan. I represent House District 29, which is close to Spargo.
I'm Richard Allen, living in the town of Hancock. I represent House District 136.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Hamlin. I represent District 32, which is South Portland and a portion of Cape Will.
I'm Senator Anne Haskell. My district is a part of Portland and a part of Westport.
Good afternoon. I'm Deb Sanderson. I represent District 88, which is Chelsea, Redfield, Jefferson, and part of Long Island.
Good afternoon. I'm Frances Head. I live in Devon. I represent District 117, which is parts of Austin, Franklin, twenty towns and township.
My name is Patty Hyman. I represent District 4, which is parts of York, Wells, Sanford, and all of the other. And on this committee, I have to say that I feel that I represent all the people of Maine trying to do the best we can.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Peter Scutti. I represent District 42, House District 42, which is part of Portland.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Representative Teague. I'm the House Chair. I represent part of the city of Westport.
And I'm Senator Eric Reiki. I represent the people of Auburn, Gloucester, Poland, Minnetonka, and the Kansas Falls. And the Senate Chairman for the committee, and we'll be presiding over this meeting today as we do these work sessions. We have several items scheduled today. I apologize that we're starting late. For those who may not know, we often try to take time to caucus in our different caucuses on these bills. We find that it actually speeds up the process and actually ends up resulting in a much more efficient use of time. So, but we have several, well, a good handful of bills for us today. We will be beginning with our bills on the General Assistance Group of Bills. That is LD 368, an Act to Integrate the State's General Assistance and Temporary Assistance for Need Families Program. LD 369, an Act to Align Municipal General Assistance Programs with the Immigration Status Policies of the Department of Health and Human Services. LD 632, an Act to Require the State to Administer and Fund the General Assistance Program. LD 722, an Act to Strengthen Penalties for Abuse of General Assistance. LD 1035, an Act to Create a Nine-Month Time Limit on General Assistance Benefits. Also, I don't believe it's on the list here, but I think that may get oversight. We also have 1036, which is an Act to Prioritize Use of Available Resources and General Assistance Programs. LD 1037, an Act to Establish a 180-day Residency Requirement for Welfare Benefits. Then we will also be here working on LD 274, a Resolve to Direct the Department of Health and Human Services to Address the Growing Deficit in Room and Board Allowances Paid to Agencies Providing Residential Services to Adults with Intellectual Disabilities or Autism. LD 831, a Resolve to Reduce Main Care Spending through Targeted Prevention Services. And LD 559, an Act to Notify Parents of a Complaint Against a Childcare Facility or Family Childcare Provider. So we will begin with LD 368, an Act to Integrate the State's General Assistance and Temporary Assistance for Need Family Programs.
Okay, so this bill provides a person who has exhausted the 60-month lifetime limit on TANF program benefits is ineligible to receive municipal general assistance program benefits. I'm gonna sort of go quickly through testimony for most of these bills. So the proponents are arguing that people are moving off TANF, but they can still go to GA and it's effectively shifting from one program to another with a push down to municipalities. There was a request from Louisville's mayor that those with TANF extensions should still be eligible, and I think they are under the way that it's written. But there also was a request for a transition period for those who are not qualified. You also heard from the department that TANF is a temporary program and that this focus should be shared in other programs. And the MMA service center communities are experiencing increases in DA directly equivalent to the TANF time limit. And I believe Kate has brought some information about that. Opponents, those timing off TANF face the most severe challenges and it's very difficult to get TANF extensions and some people are having to seek legal assistance to do that. You heard from the coalition of eastern providers, the economic barriers, the backward users. There was some discussion during a number of the hearings about the GA work group. And we have, like I said, emailed you and have printed for you another copy of that work group study. So that's what we discussed. Research from Sandy Butler, that nearly a few of families lost their homes after losing TANF. And half did not have a GED or hospital diploma. And that component could only be verified if one person owes the loss. And a few individuals verified. And the most families receiving TANF for less than two years and those receiving TANF for longer offer me include disabled dependent. The language doesn't actually really match the summary. The language allows for a person who is still receiving TANF benefits with an extension to be eligible. That's the point that Louisville's made. The summary says that if you've exhausted the 60-month lifetime limit, then you're not eligible for general assistance. But it does actually say that if you're still receiving benefits. If you no longer receive benefits under TANF, then you no longer are eligible. So that to me also says that if you have an extension and you are still receiving TANF, then you would still be eligible for general assistance. And I just included the TANF 60-month limit unless you wanted to see that. And in OFPR's preliminary fiscal impact statement, the department will require a general fundee appropriation beginning in fiscal year, let's say, 2015, '16 of 351,717 associated with being eligible to receive GA. So a fiscal note is required.
All right. I wonder if we could hear from, I know we have individuals here from some of the local welfare directors. Is there, yeah, local general assistance directors. Is there someone we could hear from? Hold on. Thank you for being here.
Hi. I'm Sue Sharon, Social Services Director for the City of Louisville. The City of Louisville has spent approximately $100,000 since the TANF 60 was implemented. We continue to see those families today. What we like about the bill is that it says to integrate the general assistance program with the DAGHS programs. We are supposed to be partners with the Department of Health and Human Services. So if the state is reducing or eliminating benefits from one program, those same folks should not just be allowed to be dependent on another welfare program, which is general assistance.
Yes, Representative Teague. Thank you, but I'm looking at the language of the bill.
Okay.
And the language. The situation I'm concerned about, I think I brought it up at the public hearing, is, you know, what if a person is exhausted their 60-month eligibility? And many, many years later, they are facing some sort of crisis that would make them, you know, that would make it appropriate for their local community, whether it's Louisville or some other community, to provide general assistance. So this basically says that once a person meets their 60-month lifetime eligibility for TANF, that the community is forbidden from giving them any general assistance going forward.
As a sponsor, though, I'd like to speak to that because the intent, and if we need an amendment to clarify that, the intent is not to prohibit local municipalities if they decide that there is a particular case where someone who does not qualify, should receive local help. But it would be on the local municipality to front the bill for that. It would not be on the state tax payers to reimburse that.
Well, the local municipality does pay some of the money right now. Thank you for the clarification. But it would prevent a local community from giving general assistance to an otherwise eligible person, even if it was many, many years after they had exhausted their 60-month lifetime. So a person could be young, you know, have hard times, go through 60 months of TANF eligibility. Many years later, they could, you know, run into a situation where, you know, on an emergency basis, on a short-term basis, they could need assistance. And this would forbid the municipality from providing general assistance to that person.
If I could just add what the mayor of Louisville recommended, I was not at the public hearing, but at the hearings. But he, the City of Louisville proposed that folks who have reached the TANF 60 time limit, if they are applying for an extension, it would be eligible until such extension was granted or either it was denied. And the municipality has the right to assist that person while they're in transition. So if language is amended to that effect, then if a person comes in, something different has happened to their situation, then we look at it and have them apply for the TANF extension. And as long as that's pending or something else is going on, then they're transitioning.
I understand that. You know, again, the, you know, one of my primary concerns about a lot of these bills is that we had a, what I think is a really productive conversation when we were talking about the budget, that the purpose of TANF at its essence and the purpose of GA at its essence are actually quite different. And one of the problems is that we now have situations where, again, GA has become kind of a long-term part of this attempt to solve the problems of chronic homelessness or the need for shelters in some communities. And what we really need to do is get GA back to being what GA is supposed to be, and the TANF back to being what TANF is supposed to be. So when I see bills that try to bring the two programs into alignment, it seems to me to be the opposite direction of where I think we ought to be going. Which, again, I question whether this is really the right approach. I mean, I actually agree with the problem, you know, the fact that because of decisions that were made up here a few years ago, you know, decisions that I don't necessarily agree with. You know, it just puts tremendous pressure on communities. But I just don't think that the problem is to cut people off from GA for the rest of their life. But in my mind, GA is supposed to be there for people that live in communities when they need it, when they're in crisis or when there's no hope.
Well, GA is intended to be a short-term safety net program. It's not intended to be the program that after someone has been jumped off of TANF after five years and they have no GED, they still don't have learner's skills, they're not employable. We don't have the resources of an ASPIRE program so that we can case manage or do anything with employment for these folks. So they're just sitting on general assistance and there's nothing for them to do.
Yeah, I agree that there were some bad decisions that were made up here. But you're sort of a tremendous pressure on your program. And I'd love to help you fix that problem, but I just don't think this is the right solution.
We're just concerned with the cost shifts. Every time something's reduced or eliminated, it's on the municipality. And we're not saying that this is the answer, you know, don't just cut folks off. We're saying, let's get together, let's be part of the solution, and let's figure out what is to be done.
And I don't really think we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Additional questions? I guess, so my question actually is for Anna. So you said, so the bill, so Mayor McDonald suggested that the bill, we might consider amending the bill to say that those who are applying for extensions with TANF should still be eligible. But you're saying that that already exists?
No, no, I didn't say that exactly. What I said was, if you get an, if you are granted an extension, then you would still be eligible because you're still on TANF. I think what Sue was saying is there's a sort of transition period. I don't know much about that. But that's super logical, that what Sue was saying is that, and I understood her decision points. One, which is if you have an extension, you should still be covered. I think that's in here. The other thing that she's saying is that you shouldn't have a transition period. And that's not in here. You would need to include it if you wanted to. I'm not sure exactly how it would be worded, but that's why you need little points and I can language later.
Okay.
So if you want to include language to ensure that people who are applying for an extension are covered.
If I could, so what we found is some folks who are coming in and they've exhausted their TANF 60. They've applied for TANF extensions. And, you know, they've showed us documents where we think they should be eligible for extensions, but it just continues and continues. And in those situations, we're saying that we should still assist them and try to assist them with getting their extensions or move them on to whatever they need to be moved on to.
So I'd be very interested in, when we eventually remove this, I'd like to have Anna then include it. Any additional questions, discussion? Or any other folks would like to hear from? I entertain a motion. Representative Teague.
I'll move this one out.
It's been moved by Representative Teague, seconded by Representative Hammond, ought not to pass. A discussion on this? Representative Hammond?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to something that you mentioned when you were presenting the bill, which I agree with. You say, welfare is at its best when it's working as a safety net. And I agree with that, but what I don't agree with, I don't understand, I guess, is how we improve these social services and that funding programs by shredding the social safety net. So that's why I'll be looking at the motion.
Any additional discussion? I'll just say that I, for programs that are supposed to be temporary, I think five years is a long time. And when someone, if there are, if, both of these programs are supposed to be temporary in nature. That's why these programs are established. TANF is actually supposed to be, I don't know if you might understand, but somewhat longer term in nature than GA is supposed to be. We have about five years on TANF. GA is supposed to be, my understanding, the original intention of GA is that it's supposed to be for very short-term acute needs. If you're on these sorts of programs for more than five years, that's not a short-term acute need. Maybe we need to look at, maybe there are other programs that people, which individuals should be qualifying for. But this should not be calling on our local municipalities. And GA and TANF are not the vehicles to that. Anyway, that's my two cents anyway. First, Representative Sanderson, then Senator Haskell.
Thank you very much. I think some of the decisions made in the past have been very good decisions. We still have exemptions in place for individuals who need TANF benefits or other benefits beyond five years. And for many of those who have reached their deadline and moved off those benefits. Well, you know, I really hope it's because they've got no job. Or because they've realized the end is near and maybe they've taken advantage of many of the other programs that we have for them to better themselves, get their GED, get their education, help get job training and get into a position so they're not reliant upon the government to care for them. And they're now a little more reliant upon themselves and have a sense of self-accomplishment and self-worth through those actions. GA, when we look at the contracts regarding GA, I mean, Senator Reiki is right. That is supposed to be a very temporary benefit handout, helping hand from your local municipality. When you look at the contracts regarding this, the lion's share of general assistance has now become the housing program. It's not for someone who can't pay their oil bill because either they're hospitalized, a patient, they got laid off, until they find something else. And it's putting quite a burden on the system, and I don't think that's really what that program was intended for. We need to look at where the problems are in these other programs first. But, you know, we do have to make sure that we're keeping in the mission for the original programs. Senator Reiki is right. Five years on TANF is an awfully long time. We still do have exceptions built in there and exceptions, and people can apply for extensions, for these extensions from TANF in order to help those who can't get the help that they need within that five-year period. And so I'm going to support this effort because, you know, sometimes, sometimes the answer needs to be known in order for us to look inside ourselves and reach down and find the strength that we may need to try and be a little more self-aware.
Senator Haskell.
Thank you very much. I actually agree with a lot of things that you said, Representative Sanderson. I really do think it should be a short-term. I don't believe it should be a housing program. That we can't just hope that people are magically going to be, no, I apologize, not magically. I think we can't just hope that people are going to be able to find it within themselves to move beyond the issues that drop them in the first place. That happens in some cases, temporary. Majority of people who are receiving any of these benefits are on a very short period of time. We're talking about folks who are on and on. And by and large, we're talking about a community who has not been provided by us. I take our personal responsibility as a state legislator for providing the kinds of services they need. I know in the city of 400, who've been on the, who've been to the shelter seven days in a row, they're assigned a casework. Whatever community is able to do that, it's a real stretch. But it's been a cost saver for us. The number of people on general assistance in the city of Portland over the last four years has dropped significantly because of work towards addressing the issues of chronic homelessness because of mental illness and the, and the true need that people have in order to get services before they are able to pull themselves up by the bootstraps. I think that communities have been given a huge responsibility. And they work very hard, do the very best they can for everybody. But I don't think we've given anywhere near enough services, both to the housing issue and to the mental health issue. For me, the way to fix that is in the front end and not just simply chop it off and say, okay, this is not working, we're going to stop here. When we haven't addressed or spent the funds that we need to address the true issues, which are the issues of housing and mental illness. So I'm not going to be supporting the bill because I think this is the wrong approach to what we agreed upon there.
Additional discussion before we take a vote? Seeing no additional discussion, we'll take a vote. The motion for us is ought not to pass on LD 368. All in favor of the motion ought not to pass, please raise your hand. Any, unless somebody got that. All right, great. All opposed? All right, let's vote. And the minority report, I'd like to include, the minority report is ought to pass as amended with the, well, focus the fiscal note and also with the transition language about individuals applying, being eligible there in the process of applying for a campus. All right. Next, we'll take up LD 369. This is an Act to Align Municipal General Assistance Programs with the Immigration Status Policies of the Department of Health and Human Services. And before we jump into it, my understanding, we'll do some discussion, but my understanding is there is a desire, because there are similar policies in the budget that are currently being debated in the budget proposals. My understanding is there is a desire to table this, but we will, and respecting that desire, I think we will do that. However, if there's any desire to have conversation on this before we table it, we can announce the opportunity. So get this away.
Well, I did not do the testimony here because we've done it already before. I just want to point out one thing, and that's the way that this is drafted compared to the way it was drafted in the budget. And I have put in here the language in Part DVD of the budget, which is much more specific language. The language in this bill says, on the basis of law, rule, or regulation related to that person's immigration status, that means pretty much zero to me, and it's very strange or lengthy language. So if you were going to go down that road, I would speak for the language on the budget.
I can't speak for any other members of the committee who would be on the ought to pass side of this, but I would have no objection to that. Representative Teague? All right. Any discussion or requests for anything, or otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to table. Representative Teague?
Thanks for your input.
All right, moved by Representative Teague, seconded by Representative Sanderson, that we table LD 369. That is a non-debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hand. All opposed? Let's vote. Next, we will jump to LD 632. This is an Act to Require the State to Administer and Fund the General Assistance Program.
Okay, so this bill shifts responsibility to the full funding administration of the GA program for municipalities to the department. It directs the department to adopt by December 31, 2015, major substantive rules necessary to implement the transfer of responsibilities. And the transfer of responsibilities under the bill is effective January 1st, 2016. You've heard from a number of proponents that municipalities are tired of the argument that they're not administering the program correctly and the state can't work them uniformly. They get, and I quote in here, "They criticize for being too mildly or for being too generous." The administration would be streamlined, there would be one approach for clients and, as well as access to data, be $8 million in property tax savings. The mayor's coalition, municipalities becoming increasingly frustrated with operating the GA program. They follow the standards set in the state statute and afford the cost of operating the program. And they're constantly being questioned by the state for informally, I mean, formally and informally to the press. And the state is always seeking to shift costs to municipalities. And the main municipal association said, if the committee is opposed to LD 632, then you should challenge claims that some municipalities are improperly administering the program, protect municipalities against initiatives that mean GA to reduce the state obligation and require the state to honor its financial commitments. The opponents, the department, GA is intended to be a local program overseen and partially funded by the state. It allows local community members to make good decisions regarding members of their towns. And the local control is appropriate and there are isolated issues in municipalities that the department is working on. There is a nice big fiscal note attached to this one. The department will require a general fund appropriation of 3.4 million in fiscal year '16 and fiscal year '17 to transfer the administration of GA to the state. There are costs for 22 new staff, eligibility, and process vouchers, technology costs to enhance the A's system to handle those vouchers for GA, and additional costs to finance that 100% of the program.
All right, any discussion? All right, any, any discussion or questions for any of the individuals here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that there is some information on, that came from Kate, oh, is that what you were going to do? Oh, that there is information that, yes, you had asked for, that Kate has provided regarding municipalities, the clearance for the aid provided to minors, and that's on page two and three. So I just wanted to point that out.
So we can do, just so that we, committee, which one do we refer to?
You got a handout from MMA, and on page two and three is some information.
It's Anna from MMA, not just from, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. Well, I noted, Annie handed it out because she gave me a, I think we might have to push another one out, or.
That's pretty.
It could be in my, yeah. I think she has, will still need one.
Yeah, it's this one I have.
Yeah, so on page two and three, and then.
It's pretty.
So Kate has put in some information, and this you asked for the association called administrators to find out where the municipalities are bearing, have billing clearance for the aid provided to minors in associates. I just want to make sure that you saw it.
Senator Haskell.
So here's a comment and not a question, you know, we help, but I'm ultimately fascinated by the idea of this happening and seeing the consistency and the oversight all in one place, with the ultimate deep concern of GA being run by kiosk or KISOC, as it's sometimes called, because of the rural nature of our communities where there are probably people sitting there, developing and terrible people in their communities. So I find myself going back and forth. So I would be delighted to hear others' values and opinions about this.
First, Representative Heinenson, then Representative Sanderson will be on that.
Thank you, and I too have been going back and forth on central versus, I think at its heart, GA is a local program, but, and I, and I really appreciate the main municipal association putting this together and, and reporting some direct verbatim comments. And I greatly appreciate my own district, Sanford, giving us this general assistance report from Randy White, who's the director. And I appreciate that because Sanford is one of our larger towns, it's not often thought about, but we have 22,000 people in Sanford, and we have a breakdown here from, from Sanford. I noted that the monthly cost per person for GA was $30.18, that out of a population of 22,000, there were 577 people on GA assistance at least once, and that 41% of those people were children. So what I've gathered from this is that the numbers are small, the number of children is relatively large, the output is small, and that at least in Sanford, which is one of our larger towns, locally, these decisions are made case by case, and that's reflected in verbatim comments that reflect a case by case approach, and I, I appreciate that rather than a centralized approach. So I do support this being what it was meant to be, which is a local approach.
Representative Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Heinenson certainly put it very eloquently. Our local municipalities, maybe, maybe because I live in much more rural areas than Portland or Bangor, et cetera, it's very easy for the municipal officers, officers in my town, my towns, to know who their citizens are, they understand their specific needs, they know who is and who isn't struggling and having a hard time, they know who is struggling and not asking for help, they know, you know, it's their neighbors, their community members, they have that, that general feel of, of community and wanting to help each other around. I think that would lose something if the state took it over, and to be quite honestly, quite honest, I, I think the GA, I'm not sure, even though we do things here and we do some adequately, some things we do very well, some things we don't do well at all. And I would hate to use, have GA slide into the not well-ahved just because you get that lack of human, human knowledge in face-to-face with the constituents from the local municipality and their officers.
Additional discussion? Representative Tean?
I make a motion on that.
Senator, second? Moved by Representative Tean and seconded by Representative Sanderson. I, I just want to say, you know, personally, here of mine is Thomas Jefferson, and I always think about comments that he made about where democracy, where these, all of these government decisions operate best, the more locally to the people you can make these decisions, where the individual person has the greatest say possible, where the, the people making the decisions, that where everyone knows each other as intimately as possible. And I think the more, I think one of the problems we have with this government in general is, the more and more we get away from that, the more and more we centralize decision-making, the more, it gets away from the people being affected and the people who, both, both the people